Thank you. Good evening. Before we call this meeting to order, we have a presentation of Ms. Trisha Kirk from the Exceptional Foundation.
Ms. Kirk, if you want to come forward with your others and introduce them and go from
there.
I brought a better basketball team.
You were going to say that till the end, I thought.
It's called the trade.
We might cut you off before you go any further.
Man, y'all are getting it really close. I mean, man, I'm starting to sweat bullets. You know, y'all don't remember the rules here.
It's all the middle schoolers anyway. That's the problem.
I had a game plan for that. As coach, I promise you, I had a game plan for that. We're going to call a timeout with 15 seconds left and...
You know, John Miller, the next day, we had to end up paying five extra dollars to pay parking citations because he lost. So I call between a rock and a hard spot. I've got John Miller and y'all. All right, with that, here is our mature presentation.
All right, we'll see. Hey, y'all, I'm Robbie from the Exceptional Foundation. I think most of y'all know me at this point. Y'all might not know, I grew up in Homewood, lifelong resident. I went to school here from K through 12, graduated with Mike's son, Rayner, and I still live in Homewood, and I plan to for the rest of my life. So I know as much as anybody how much there is to be proud of in this city. There's so much. I grew up in West Homewood, and I still live in West Homewood, and the stuff that's been going on in West Homewood, man, I'm telling y'all, it is, it makes me so happy. Having to drive across Greensprings to do everything, you know, 20 years ago. You don't got to leave, you don't got to leave West Homewood anymore. You can, you know, go to the ballpark, and go to the pool, and Pizzeria GM, and Ash, and all these fantastic things. But there's so much more. There's the school system, which speaks for itself, restaurants, and I could go on and on. But when I think about what makes me the most proud to say that I'm from Homewood, it's how this city treats people with special needs. Because Homewood is a model city, and if we're being honest, it might be the model city in America for how to treat people with intellectual disabilities. Because you think about it, the Bell Center, infants, babies, children, the school system, 5 till 21, the Exceptional Foundation, 5 till 85.
Well, I'm only 83 right now.
And, you know, so there is a full lifespan of services right here in this city for people with special needs. This summer, we're expanding our youth summer camp program for the first time ever. We've had two groups since 2002 when we started this program, and it has grown to the point where we're now adding a third group, which might not sound that impressive, but man, I promise you, stop by about mid-June, it'll be buzzing. I mean, we're going to go from serving 60 kids a day to, you know, we'll be close to 100.
Just little children.
Just little children, a lot of whom are in the Homewood school system. But it just blows my mind that when you, when you talk about a city's conscience, when you talk about its code of ethics, when you talk about its morals, what's more reflective of that than how a city treats its most vulnerable and its most marginalized population? And that's what this city has done, and that's what it's doing, and I know that's what it'll continue to do. It's one of the many things that makes Homewood a special place, and if you ask me, I think it's the most important thing that makes Homewood a special place, that this is a model city. I mean, not just for Birmingham, not just Alabama, I mean, not even the country, the world. This is a model city for how we treat people with intellectual disabilities. And I can't think of anything that makes me more proud to be of Homewood and to be in front of y'all today. So thank y'all so much for all that y'all have done for us, all that y'all are doing for the community, and thank you for making this a special place, and just thank y'all. And I think Tricia has a couple of words she'd like to say. Thank you.
And Mills, also, you can tell that we kind of share in this. You know, y'all keep, the number one question is, I'm 65. I'm sorry that I'm almost, I'm really only 64, so we're working...
No, I'm not concerned about that. Just use the microphone.
Thank you. So Mills is going to tell you about some of the volunteer opportunities. So what this is, we'd like to also show you that the people that we're pulling in from other areas of our city, but as Robbie said, state and world, yes, we did have someone from India come visit us and asked me to go to India to help him start an exceptional... Mm-hmm. I can't even spell it, much less go. But anyway, so we've had people from there. We also have a person from Germany who now lives in Jacksonville, Florida, who, Frank Schaffner, who was at UAB and also said, "This is what you're doing in Homewood. Could you come and tell us how to do this as well there?" Besides, as you're well aware of, the people that are here, that visit us regularly, that are affiliated with us, that have our name, Memphis, Tennessee, Auburn, Memphis, Auburn, Fairhope, Atlanta, Charlotte, Florida, Indianapolis, La Grange, Georgia.
Yeah, I mean, something that started here in this city is being replicated, you know, all over the country.
Which is very difficult, but we're working on it. But anyway, so Mills, can you tell them about some volunteers?
I'm Mills Gory, and I just started at the foundation after being involved for decades. My uncle is John Miller, y'all's coach. Sorry about the game. But since I've been there, we've just been really trying to increase our volunteer opportunities in the community, our educational outreach. Last month alone, we had 208 volunteer hours. Homewood School is actively involved with us. Tomorrow for Young Adult Basketball League, the Homewood seniors are coming, which we really appreciate education-wise. We're doing training of nurses, Sanford, Hurson College, UAB, Birmingham Southern, and Jeff State. We have junior league volunteers at least three times a week, and our corporate volunteers, including Regions and Brian Bank, Brassfield Gory and Protective Life, have really increased what we're trying to do volunteer-wise and with education, especially compared to where we've been in the past. We've just really made a sincere effort to not just be a special place, like Robbie said, but also be a place where people can come and learn. Because a lot of people come to us, and they don't know what to expect, and they don't know how to treat our guys, and it's really an honor and a privilege to be able to show both Homewood and the rest of the world now, India, kind of what we do and how we do it, because it is a model, so...
And my part is to talk about the economic development. So we do go on 87, or each participant, well, as a group, go on 87 field trips a month. That's a lot. We have, how many vans? I just bought one. I have seven vans. We just bought one last week. I hadn't told the board yet, so could you just wait until my board meeting before I tell them? And we fill them all up in the Shell Station. We still have a private charge account at the Shell Station besides the Piggly Wiggly, but I think you're going to go into that. And our parents, we've asked them about transportation. Would you please let us provide transportation from Shelby County, from Trussville, from Tuscaloosa, and we'll meet you halfway, our vans, and bring you here? And we have not been successful in that area, and so we did a survey from our parents going, "Why can we not just pick your participant up in another area?" And the response continued to be that the parents have now found a group of people themselves, and they're their own support group, and they meet for coffee. One group goes bowling on Tuesday. They spend their days, they go do what they're supposed to, I mean, what they want to do, like go in to the grocery store and do everything that you can do in West Homewood now, and then they come back and pick up their participant. So they don't want transportation. They want to come here and stay because they talk to each other, and that is part of it. Also, part of what we do is the lunches. When we have any type of lunch, we have to have the staff lunches. I always do staff lunches or my board lunches, that we do it from places here in Homewood. And with that, part of the volunteers, they have to leave for an hour a day during the middle of our day period, and that is not enough time to go somewhere else. So the Bills really does love us because they have to eat so close, or a little, or Hero Donut. So they go eat lunch at these different places, then come back. Our annual budget is $2 million, or a little bit over that right now. Our capital campaign, as y'all are well aware, was $4 million. $475,000 of that were the lots that we purchased. The capital campaign, I am very happy to say, we're down to $200,000. Iberia is probably not real thrilled because I'm paying it all faster than they had anticipated. And from that, I was hoping that y'all would consider increasing your funding to us from $45,000 to $50,000 this next year, just to help us with the demands of the Exceptional Foundation and the cost. Our participant fees continues to make up a fourth of our budget. No one is turned away because of money. I do not ask for your 990 or whatever your tax things are. It's just between you and God. And if you want to lie, you lie, but I'm not turning a child away because of money. And so from this, and what we hope we've given back to the community, that y'all would consider increasing the contract for services from the city. Any questions? I know you have to vote or something like that, not right now, but you could just get back to me. I'll write you a real nice letter. I mean, you know, that contract for, Mike knows, Mike, Mike knows.
Well, remember, budget discussions are coming up in September, so we'll...
And we will send a letter to you the 1st of June. Wait, Robbie has to tell you this part.
Yeah, we actually ran a query today, and we saw that we serve 697 participants, and Homewood, Homewood participants actually are the second largest group that we serve. The largest, obviously, being Birmingham. But Homewood comes in, we serve 66 children and adults that reside in Homewood.
Y'all, we have to add on again. I mean, not add-on, add-on, that y'all would know about, but inside, we have to remodel and come, we have to add a wall inside. Do you know how much a wall costs? It's $100,000 because we have these little children sitting at home, so we really need your $50,000. All right, and I'll do it formal next week.
Thank you.
And if I want to get some tips, Coach Shepherd is bringing the Mars. The Exceptional Foundation, 5:00 PM tomorrow, they play our teenagers, so if y'all want to take some notes, maybe we'll see what happens.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Any questions?
I don't think so.
If we have a question, Walter.
One thing that, this goes back all the way to your inception. I mean, from the very beginning and what has...
More than 20 years ago.
What has, I don't want to say concerned me, but we have so many other municipalities that have participants that are not contributing. So I want either the mayor or Mr. Limbaugh to really forge on to look at these other cities, and if we're talking about, you know, the things you're doing from the Mayor's Association, we really need to pressure some of these other cities.
Yes, we would love your help on that. We are receiving funding from Pelham, Mount Brook, Vestavia, Hoover. We just got Trustful this past year, and Trustful, and I hope I didn't, Irondale...
Okay, if you can just give it, I mean, we'll put this in the, look at the budget...
But I would love, we cannot get in Birmingham City for love or money. I cannot get a meeting with anybody in Birmingham City. I would love that.
Okay. Well, that, we pledge that we'll help you do that, I think. I think that would be good.
And then we have a lot of the, I don't know what you call them, I call them politicians, county commissioners and, what do you call state people? What do you call those people?
Representatives.
Representatives, yeah, you can tell them into politics. We've done well last year with some of those people as well, and we don't receive the state and federal money because they have such rules on who we can serve and who we can't serve. And like we changed the rules on Nicole Mack today, and the state and federal government wouldn't have let us change the rules on Nicole, and I don't think, as long as I'm there, I'm going to be able to listen to them.
All right. We can certainly create some documentation and reach out to the other municipalities. We can do that. Thank y'all, we appreciate you being here. Take care. All right. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order, and we're going to begin with an invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance, if you would. Stand with me while Walter Jones is good enough to offer to do this.
Bow with me, please, to pray. Thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day. Thank you for all of our many blessings. We thank you for all of our mothers from yesterday. We honor all of the mothers. We thank you for the Exceptional Foundation and the Bell Center and all the other wonderful organizations that Homewood supports, and the citizens go out en masse to support. We thank you for our employees, we thank you for our citizens, and we pray for a successful council meeting tonight. All of this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I appreciate it, sir. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Gualtney.
Here.
Mr. Thames.
Here.
Mr. Higginbotham.
Here.
Mr. Wolverton.
Here.
Ms. McCluskey.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Here.
Mrs. Andrus.
Here.
Mr. Wright.
Here.
And President Limbaugh.
Here. So we have everyone here tonight, we appreciate that. Next item of business is the reading of the minutes from April 8th, 2019. Chair would welcome a motion to dispense with the reading and accept the minutes as we've already received them.
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Ms. Andrus. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. Next is the reading of the minutes from April 22nd, 2019, and again, the chair would welcome a motion to dispense with the reading and approve said minutes. Motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. Gualtney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that, too, is unanimous. Okay, board appointments, mental health authority nominations. Ms. Smith?
Yes. This is a three-member board, and I am reappointing two members, Donna Burgess and Cindy Smith, both of whom are, have been serving and are actually serving in leadership capacities on the JPS. So we are reappointing them, and then, these are all at-large positions. And then, we received a resume from Kenyatta Hardin, who is Award One resident, to fill that third at-large spot. So I would like to recommend reappointing Donna Burgess and Cindy Smith and nominating Kenyatta Hardin as our nominee.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Higginbotham. Any questions of Ms. Smith? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is unanimous. And Ms. Salter, if y'all will contact them, I appreciate it. All right, educational building authority appointments are reopening. I understand that we still don't have any applicants on that, so we'll reopen this through, we'll say through the 10th of June and discuss it again. Board of Ed appointment for Ward Two. We have four applicants now, as I understand it, and we need to schedule interviews quickly enough so that that appointment can take place next Monday night, and I'm going to, let me ask you this. If we have them Wednesday evening, Mr. Wolverton, I know that Mr. Higginbotham said he could make it, could you?
In two nights.
Yes.
Just one, how long? And so four, or...
You have to assume at least 20 minutes, maybe 30 minutes for each one.
I'll affect for giving us that one, and thank you, Walter.
I understand. So let's see if we can set them up six to eight.
What time you want to start, start?
Um...
5:30. Is 5:00 too early or 5:30?
5:30.
Is too early, isn't it?
5:30 should be okay.
For the first one at 5:30?
Yeah, let's do that. That'll work. And we'll set those...
I'll send y'all out as soon as I get a confirmation from them.
And council, we would encourage as many of y'all to be there as you can, and we'll love, we'll certainly handle those interviews like we have others. Homewood Environmental Commission, Ward Three, do we have anyone? Mr. McCluskey or Mr. Jones?
Yeah, we didn't officially reopen, I guess, from the, what, did we, from the last council meeting?
I think we did at the last...
Yeah, we reopened it through today.
Through today.
Through today. Okay. And we got...
We have one applicant.
One applicant, okay.
Abraham...
Audrey Zinn.
I don't know this individual, so...
I don't either, Mike. Do you?
Amy.
Amy?
I should ask my project.
You're more than welcome to. I mean, he was the only applicant, so...
Yeah, and he's been trying to get on, just for about a year now. He was also involved with a temporary...
Why don't you come forward for the sake of the microphone, Amy?
Yeah. So Abraham O'Drezen was helping with the Regional Planning Commission effort. I believe there was a temporary committee set up that he was involved in. He was hoping that there would be a design review board formed that he wanted to be involved in. He has a local landscaping company in Homewood, Oberbaum, O'Drezen, and I can't remember the third name, but he's wanted to be involved with the AGC for a while, and there just hasn't been a spot open in Ward Three, and he didn't, he missed the last at-large period, so, yeah.
Okay.
Well, as the single applicant, Amy responsive, I would make a motion to...
Thank you.
Pronounce his name one more time.
Abraham O'Drezen.
O'Drezen, thank you, for Mr. O'Drezen to join the AGC for Ward Three.
So we have a motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Jones. Any other questions? I see a look of concern. Okay, good. Mr. Wright? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? If you all will let him know, that would be a good thing. Okay. We've got some amending of the agenda, and Ms. Salter, we've even got a couple of items that we picked up since you and I just talked.
I will, I will.
I know. All right, here we go. Committee referral agenda items. We have five. 1805-19, request for mid-year review, requested by Mr. Burgett, our finance director. This, of course, will go to finance, Mr. Jones. 1905-19, request for consideration of an ordinance, levy and edvolorm taxes for October 1, 2019, requested by our city attorney. This, too, will go to finance. 2005-19, request for consideration of an ordinance granting an exemption from edvolorm taxes for October 1, 2019, requested by our city attorney, and again, will go to finance. Now, let me skip a number here, we'll come back to it. 2205-19, this is a committee referral to special issues, request to acquire a piece of land from the city at 2927 Central Avenue, requested by Peter Jamison and Greg Cobb. This will be special issues, Ms. Smith. 2305-19, request to contract Volker Engineering for Central Avenue Apple Study. This will be assigned to P and D, and requested by Mr. Gualtney and Mr. Thames. And lastly, a new business other is 2105-19, which is a request for consideration to adopt resolution opposing current legislation in the Senate regarding installation of utility poles and wireless facilities in the city-owned right-of-way, requested by Mr. Kendrick. And those are the six items, and if we don't have others, the chair would welcome a motion for approval of the...
Did you skip 21?
That was the last one I said.
No, that was all.
I intentionally skipped it because it was new business over. That's why I flipped back.
Is that my number? It's already in. Back, sir.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. Thames.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question? I didn't get the property on Central Avenue someone wanted to acquire. What was that address again? I'm sorry, I didn't get the number.
2927 Central Avenue.
Okay, I got it right. Okay. Thank you.
There we go. All right, so we have a motion as second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that is, the agenda is now approved, and we will get into it. Consent agenda, chair would welcome a motion and second for approval. Motion from Mr. McCluskey, second from Mr. Higginbotham. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the consent agenda is approved. Now, next item is old business, 1504-19, public hearing held April 22nd for a variance to the sign ordinance at 2829 19th Street South, requested by Daniel Von Hagel, Greg Cobb with our BEZ. We held the public hearing, we closed the public hearing, but we carried the item over. So Mr. Cobb, we're going to start with you, sir.
Okay, we have some new renderings for you to see on the building that were revised from our last meeting. This is a multiple sign variance for multiple attached signs. Our current ordinance only allows one attached and one, well, actually downtown, we don't have monuments anymore, but my understanding is the big pole sign out front with the big ball would go away, and their request is to put these that are shown here, and I'll let them speak to each one as they go by.
Sure. Good evening, folks. I'm Jim Avery. I am the Director of Development for Jax, and since the April 22nd meeting, we have gone back and done some homework. I, we met with Greg and his team again. I personally spoke with Councilman Wright to talk about his thoughts of our request, and we took those, that information went back to our leadership team and came back with a couple of changes from what we asked at the last meeting. The first is, we'd like to reduce our signage from four signs to three, and the sign that we're eliminating was a 1x20 sign that read "All About the South" that was on the face of the canopy there on the entrance side of the building. And then, the other thing that we learned, and we certainly understand, you know, the city's desire to make the downtown area as contemporary and sophisticated as possible, we would, we looked at the three signs that we would like to ask for, and the sign, the Jax lettering on the entry side of the building there, those are, those are channel letters that are halo lit and in very, a very modern and contemporary type look. The other two signs are basically round cabinet-type signs that are backlit, and we thought that it would be a more sophisticated look for us to take those round backlit signs and have those as channel and halo lit as well. And Daniel's got a few photos that show what a sign like that would look like in a night setting.
Yeah, if I could speak to that, thanks for having us back.
And your name is?
Sir.
You're Daniel Von Hagel.
Yes, sir, I am. Yes, sir, Mr. Limbaugh. To speak to that, going from the traditional sign cabinet that's kind of commercialized, we have to kind of stick with the brand integrity. Our brand manager, Christie's, actually here to, in support of that. So with that said, looking at these drawings, looking at the elevations, it doesn't look like it's too much different. Looking at this right here, that's actually not even the cabinet that is, would potentially go on the front elevation. This would be a round metal panel, and that panel would actually have red LED backlit on the backside of that that would actually illuminate off the exterior wall behind it, and there would be raised individual channel letters, individual white Jax channel letters that would have that halo lit shining off the back of that. That last photo that I think y'all have in y'all's packets and that is up here actually kind of shows an example of what that looks like, pretty classy. The colors will look really, really good together, and ultimately, we took another sign away, so we went from 121 square feet, now we're down to 100.85 square feet of total signage we're asking for, and we're just trying to do our part, you know, trying to get the maximum amount of signage that we need to get for business from each elevation, and we appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Cobb, and I certainly want to hear from Mr. Jones, but help my memory, the sign ordinance dictates that it be, and we know about the number of signs, but the sign ordinance total size would be what for this location?
50.
Okay, so we're talking about 100, 100.85.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And three total signs. Mr. Jones?
It's interesting, since you presented to us the first time, I've started noticing Jax all over the place. So this looks almost identical to the one at Highway 160 going towards Hayden. Is that fairly, is it fairly close type of signage that you're looking here? Do you, I don't know if you're even aware of that...
You talk about the new store off Exit 284 in Hayden?
Yes.
That's the newer version, that's the modern kind of standard store that we do. So about for every 10 stores, Jax is now implementing this Store of the Future package. So ultimately, this, you know, this just came about last year, first location in Southside Gatston. We've since opened one up in Dora. There's one coming in Troy, there's one in Hickson, Tennessee, outside of Chattanooga, There's one coming in Troy, there's one in Hickson, Tennessee, outside of Chattanooga. So it's, it's kind of, it's very new, this concept right here. And we felt like with Homewood kind of being the first store and being around here for so long, that it was kind of just that we put this store here for the citizens of Homewood.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other questions?
Greg, what's the square footage of the side?
One on the side says Jaxx?
Yep.
I don't have that.
It's 48. It's four feet tall, 11 feet wide.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
May I, one more thing?
Sure.
Council chair, the sign ordinance was revised March 23rd, 2015. That's the current ordinance we have to go by. Not, you know, any ordinance that may come into the future, but this particular one. When we walk outside right down here at City Hall, there's a great establishment. I know I personally love it, but the Soho Social is right there. They opened up in 2017. And we can't help but notice that they have four signs spread out on two separate elevations. So ultimately, they had to go out of the code in order to get those things, square footage-wise and multiple signs. I think we're probably just looking for the same shot, kind of the fairness factor when it comes to what we're looking for.
I understand. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Could y'all sign in right here?
Yes, please, please sign your names in. Mr. Cobb, anything else?
No, sir. Any more questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Alright, ladies and gentlemen, sorry, Mr. Waltney, go.
I was just concerned about the calculation. It said 100.85, but the circular sign is 32, or 36?
It's a six-by-six circle, so how Homewood Code reads it's actually 28.26 because it's a circle.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you. Okay, chair would welcome a motion. Well, I mean, the public hearing's already closed. Thank you.
I would move to approve the amended presentation here.
Alright, we have a motion from Mr. Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Andrus. Alright, any other discussion before we take this vote? Alright, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Alright, let's call.
And please, Peter and I need to abstain.
Okay.
Can I do a call vote?
Please.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Waltney?
No.
Mr. Thames?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
No.
Mr. Wolverton?
No.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith? Abstain. Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Abstain.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Yes. So this passes 5-4 with two abstentions.
Is that right?
Yes.
Can we have six most times?
It's, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, okay, then it does not pass.
Really?
Sorry. Thank you. Next item, 2704-19, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the fence ordinance to add a section of fencing across city alley right-of-way at 1575 Valley View Circle requested by John Mark Reeves, Wyatt Pugh and Greg Cobb. Report from special issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Mr. McCluskey and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. We'll open the public hearing now. Mr. Cobb?
I spoke with Mr. Reeves. I told you that we found we had a survey of the property and he has elected to just stay straight behind his house, which gives him the proper setback on the side, and he will not need a variance. So I would ask that we drop this.
Alright, well, first, is there anyone else who wants to speak to this particular matter? If there is not, we can close the public hearing and chair would welcome a motion for dropping.
Motion to drop, second.
Wait a minute, Mr. Thames, motion by Mr. Thames, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is dropped. Next item, 2704-19, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a modification of a previously granted variance to the Homewood fence ordinance to allow six-foot privacy fence to remain along front property line at 612 Hamball Avenue requested by Jeremy Galloway, Wyatt Pugh and Greg Cobb. Report, Ms. Smith.
Yes, committee voted 5 to 0 to refer this item back out to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Ms. Andrus.
Alright, thank you. We'll open the public hearing. Go.
Okay.
Mr. Cobb?
Yes, Mr. Galloway is here and we've spoken this over the past week. He would like to address the council and make a proffer.
First, have you all signed in?
No.
Please do. Now, you are?
I am Jeremy Galloway.
Okay.
So purchased the property back in December with the current owner built the fence out of variance. So I'm talking to Mr. Cobb and Mr. Pugh last few weeks. Would like to make a proffer to the fence where I cut the fence down to four foot and then remove every other picket and then dog ear where it is the original variance, which was four foot and picket, so.
Okay, any questions? Mr. McCluskey?
I was just going to ask if he's going to, does any variance need to be granted if he's just going to bring it in compliance with the original variance that was granted? There was also a little setback difference on the original variance and the current location.
That was going to be my question.
Okay. Define.
The setback, yes, sir. The original variance granted was four-foot-high picket fence, but it was set some distance behind the sidewalk. I don't remember exactly, but it's, it's not, we have a picture of it, it's sitting a couple, it's sitting a couple of feet behind the sidewalk. That picture doesn't show it very well, but here is grass, there is grass between, there you can see it better. There is grass between the fence and the sidewalk.
If I may, I'm Wes Daniel, I'm a Homewood resident, I'm a partner of Jeremy, and I also have my businesses.
Microphone, please.
And just to clarify, if the question is about the encroaching on the sidewalk, if that's the main concern, what about if we were to actually take it back one bay, which would be about eight additional feet to bring the fence back some?
I'm one vote, but that sounds better to me.
Well, we're trying to come to a resolution and we want to make everyone happy, we do. But we're trying to come to one that is as cheap as possible, if you can understand where we're coming from. If we were to chop it down and bring it back one bay, that's almost as expensive as putting up a brand-new fence and tearing it down. And that's, it's an expense that we just, we didn't intend on, and I know that's not y'all's issue, we understand that. It's, this is something that we thought was fine, we did all of our due diligence, we spoke to the homeowner that we bought it from, and she never mentioned anything about this, and we're just trying to deal with it as best we can, and I guess the easiest way possible.
There should be a drawing on file from the original variance that we can go by if that would please the council. We find the original drawing, it shows you exactly where it was. I don't think it's that far back, I think it was like six feet. But there is one on file, I know we had it at the time.
Okay, is there, if they go back six feet, what are we approving? I mean, it's...
There was still the variance, if I'm correct, the variance of the previous homeowner came before us, it was for, was it for a setback or was it just for the...
It was caused, it was caused in the front yard, in front of the house, yes, sir. And there was a given number of where it was a setback. If he goes back to the original variance, that's what I'm saying, take it back there and turn it into a picket fence and make it four feet tall, which is what was agreed to some two, three years ago.
Then there's no variance needed.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, there's no variance needed.
If, you know.
Well, there would still be a front yard.
I know, but the front, that part's already been approved, Mr. Wolverton, so, you know, the whole issue is moot at this point, if that's what, what the folks are agreeing to do, okay?
So is it shadow panels right now, is that kind of how it's laying out?
It's, it's, there's sawbyside, the sides are butted right up against each other, the front-facing one, there's a small strip, but you, I wouldn't consider it a picket per se. It is hard to tell from, especially from this angle. If you do look directly at it, you can see into the fence, so it's not, I guess you couldn't call it technically privacy, but again, we do want, we do understand where we're coming from.
From the front side.
Yeah, you can, you can see that you, there is some transparency in this, you know.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, we appreciate it, guys. Anyone else who wants to speak to this matter? If not, we will close this public hearing. And again, I would say to you that we really don't have anything to vote on if that's, that's going to be the mode of operation. Mr. Cobb, we would challenge you to certainly follow up and make sure it's done as, in the manner that we just discussed, okay? 2004-19, public hearing set for June 10th at 6:00 PM for consideration of a possible vacation of an alley on 18th Street requested by myself, and we will carry that over until that date. Yes.
On that, we need to at least maybe drop it or accept the report or something, do something with it, with that item. Can we move to drop it and accept the homeowner's plan or something?
Okay.
Second.
Sure. We have a motion from Mr. Jones, second from Mr. McCluskey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, done. 0602-19, request for consideration of an ordinance limiting timeframe of hotel stays within the city limits of Homewood requested by Mr. McCluskey, referred to planning commission on 4819 or referred back to council from planning commission on 5719. Therefore, we need a report from the planning commission, Mr. Thames.
The planning commission met on the 7th and voted unanimously to accept the changes as were presented from council.
Okay, good.
Recommend accepting.
Alright, good. First reading, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, it's an ordinance amended provisions of Article 2 entitled Definitions to provide for a new definition for transients of Appendix A entitled zoning ordinance. Be ordained by the city council as follows, as Article 2 is amended, to include the definition of transient as follows. It's a person, firm, or corporation, business entity that rents or has furnished any room or rooms, lodging, or accommodations in a hotel or motel for a period less than 180 continuous days in the city. That all other provisions of the zoning ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. Section 3 of any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction or all other parts remain in full force and effect. Section 4, that the ordinance become effective immediately upon its adoption by the city council and approval of the mayor or those wise becoming law.
Thank you, sir.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
We were planning on referring it back to committee, but once we have the first reading, are we able to do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Alright, chair would welcome a motion and second for unanimous consent. You want it referred back to the...
Actually, yes, could I, yes, could we refer it back to the special issues committee? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to refer it back to the special issues committee for discussion.
Alright, motion from Ms. Smith, second from Mr. McCluskey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and it is done. No?
I don't have anything to say about that, just about the actual ordinance.
No.
No.
No. No. Mr. Patel?
And that was special issues you referred it back to?
If you want to discuss it at the special issues committee meeting, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you. 1808-18, request for consideration to contract for citywide traffic study requested by Mr. Waltney and Mr. Thames. Report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I'm deferring to Mrs. Smith, who chaired my meeting in my absence.
Ms. Smith?
Ms. Smith is unprepared. Okay, we met last Monday and voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving Volker as the consultant on this project. Motion was made by Mr. Thames and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham.
Thank you. So we have a motion from finance. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously and that is resolution 1964. And that is approved. 2111-18, request for presentation to update city council on the hot tree landscaping tools requested by Amy Milan with our HEC. Report from special issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, we met and talked to Ms. Milan again. We'd had a presentation previously about this and wanted the HEC to do some tree inventory for us, but Ms. Milan wanted a little bit more guidance as to how we would be carrying that out. So after discussing it, the committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approving a sampling inventory done by, we think, volunteers, and we're going to get some training for that. And that we might need to, if we want to continue to do this, we might have to consider getting some interns for some previous, but that would be in another budget year. The motion was made by Mr. Waltney and seconded by Mr. McCluskey to approve that sampling tree inventory.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Therefore, special issues is the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, any opposed? Sorry.
No problem. And that is approved. That presentation is approved. 2404-19, request for consideration of a historic preservation commission updates requested by Ms. Smith, and also, Ms. Smith's going to give us a report.
Yes. Susan Zubor, who is the chair of the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission, came in front of us just to present what they've been doing and some of the things that they have been taking, taking to the public in the last few months. And the committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend accepting her presentation. And that motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. McCluskey.
Thank you, ma'am. All in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 2404-19 is okay. 2504-19, request for permission to work in the city right-of-way to install a drainage pipe across the section of Woodland Park to Griffin Brook from the house on 501 Woodland Drive requested by Bob Grantham, Wyatt Pugh and Greg Cobb with BEZ, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approving, allowing the work to be done pending the proper indemnification agreements and making sure that Mr. Grantham restored the park property after the work is done. There's been some flooding issues which this is going to hopefully remedy. The motion was made by Mr. Waltney and seconded by Mr. McCluskey.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Any other comments, Mr. Cobb?
No, sir.
Okay, good. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is resolution 1965. Okay. 1004-19, request for consideration to add crosswalks at the intersection of Oxmore Road and Edginal Drive as well as Oxmore Road and Edginal Lane requested by Julie Johnson, Carol Wiggit and Andrew Wolverton. Report from public safety, Mr. McCluskey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the crosswalk on the west side crossing Oxmore on Edginal and also on, I'm sorry, Edginal Drive as well as Edginal Lane, including crossing signage with the arrow. Motion was made by Counselor Wolverton, seconded by Counselor Andrus.
Right, thank you, sir. First reading, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, it's an ordinance to provide for the installation of two pedestrian crosswalks across Oxmore Road at the intersection of Oxmore Road with Edginal Drive and at the intersection of Oxmore Road with Edginal Lane. Be ordained by the city as follows. Chief of Police is directed to install a pedestrian crosswalk at the intersection across Oxmore Road at the intersection of Oxmore Road with Edginal Drive. Section 2, the Chief of Police is directed to install a pedestrian crosswalk across Oxmore Road at the intersection of Oxmore Road and Edginal Lane. 3, that all drivers and motor vehicles defined in the highway code should yield to pedestrians located within the crosswalk as defined here and above. Section 4, any person found guilty of violating this ordinance shall be punished as provided by section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 5, all other ordinance or the parts of ordinance contrary to provisions here are repealed. Section 6, of any part of provision or ordinance... Section 6, of any part of provision or ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdiction, such holding shall not affect any other parts, provisions, or sections of the ordinance. Section 7, the ordinance become effective meeting upon its adoption by the City Council, approval by the mayors, or otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Chair would welcome a motion and second for unanimous consent.
Motion.
Motion from Mr. Wolverton, second from Mr. Higginbotham. No, Mr. Gualtney, sorry. Always do better with the left side than the right. I'm sorry, guys. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes, so this will be ordinance 2743. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Mr. Wolverton. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes, so 2743 is passed unanimously. Thank you. 2304-19, request for consideration to add a stop sign at the Gaineswood-Grey Street intersection requested by Mr. Thames. Report, Mr. McCloskey.
Um, yes, the committee met and voted five to zero to recommend the approval of the stop sign on Gray Street, one-way heading west. Uh, the motion was made by Counselor Thames, seconded by Counselor Andrus.
Thank you. First reading, Mr. Kendrick.
An ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood and to provide penalties for the violation thereof. Be ordained by the City Council as follows. Every person, firm, or corporation operating a motor vehicle is defined by the Highway Code in a westy direction on along Gray Street and said city should cause a motor vehicle to come to please stop at the intersection of Gray Street with the eastly right-of-way line of Gaineswood Road in the city. Section 2, that any violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by Section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section 3, the Chief of Police shall erect or cause to be erected appropriate lines and markings or no parking signs, stop signs at the intersection placed described in one, Sections 1 and 2 above, and Section 4, that the provision of this ordinance shall become effective meeting upon its adoption by the City Council or approval by the mayors or otherwise becoming law.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick.
Motion for unanimous consent.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. McCloskey. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Thames. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gualtney?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Thames?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Wolverton?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Andrus?
Yes.
Mr. Wright?
Yes.
And Mr. Limbaugh.
Yes, 2744 is passed unanimously. Next item is 3104-19, request for consideration to close roadway on Oak Grove Road between Raleigh Avenue and Hall Avenue on June 1st, 2019, for Street Fest, and on August 24th, 2019, for the Back to School Bash from 4 to 6, 4 to 9:00 PM. Requested by Mr. Wolverton. Report, Mr. McCloskey.
Uh, yes, the committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the requested closures for June 1st and August 24th. Um, the motion was made by Counselor Wolverton and seconded by Counselor Wyatt.
All right, thank you, sir. We have a motion from Public Safety. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That is Resolution 1966, and it is approved unanimously. Uh, next is the committee referral agenda with its amendments. Uh, Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion from Mr. Higginbotham, second from Ms. Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that is approved. All right, um, bear with me. Other new business, we're going to zip through some scheduling items here. 1005-19, request to set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues for consideration of variance to the fence ordinance at 3 Ventura Drive, requested by Chris Tucker and Greg Cobb. We will set that public hearing for June 10th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. 1105-19, request to set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues for consideration of a variance to the driveway ordinance at 416 Devon Drive, requested by David Champion and Greg Cobb. We will set that for June 10th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. 1205-19, request to set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues for consideration of a variance to the fence ordinance at 251 Lakeshore Parkway, Suite 101, requested by Diane Foley and Greg Cobb with our BEZ department, and we will set that public hearing for June 10th.
Did you set sidewalk and fence ordinance?
I thought I said side ordinance. Uh, thanks. Uh, where I came from, it's 3:00 AM right now, so anything you can do.
It's maybe events.
Yeah, it could, it could have been a driveway, but anyway, thank you. Set for June 10th at 2019 at 6:00 PM. 1305-19, request to set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 3500 Independence Drive, requested by Kyle Davis, Greg Cobb, and we are setting that public hearing, not surprisingly, for June 10th at 2019 at 6:00 PM. 1405-19, request to set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues for consideration of a variance to the sign ordinance at 190 West Oxmore Road, requested by John, Joe Tunnel and Greg Cobb with our BEZ department, and we will set that one for June 10th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Okay, 1505-19, request for consideration of revised employee drug policy, requested by Harold Parker and Mr. Kendrick, our city attorney. Uh, Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval. Wait, before we do that, Mr. Kendrick, anything we need to discuss on this?
No, sir, these are just changes that were recommended by, there's been changes in the federal law since we approved it many years ago, and it's just an update recommended by our drug testing group and Harold.
All right, I understand. Chair would welcome a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Mr. Wright. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? If not, it should be 1967. Does that sound correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, that is Resolution 1967. And we will continue forward. 1605-19, request for consideration of an ABC O40 retail beer on or off premises, an ABC O60 retail table wine on or off premises licensed for Oscar's Restaurant, LOC, DBA, Doing Business as Green House, located at 1017 Oxmore Road, Suite 111. Uh, we have no letter of objection, or we actually have a letter of no objection received from the police department, um, and we, fire inspection is complete except for a fire alarm, and we'll be ready to re-inspect Thursday, so the Chair would welcome a motion for approval subject to the re-inspection Thursday.
Motion.
Motion from Mr. McCloskey, second from Mr. Wright. Any further discussion? If there be none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And that is unanimously approved. Excuse me, 1705-19, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of April 22nd, 2019 through May 12th, 2019, uh, City Treasurer as well as Finance Committee. Mr. Jones, I assume Mr. Thames is looking at this?
That's correct. I would recommend approval and payment of vouchers.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Thames. We have a second from Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Or was it, um?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, any further discussion? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? That is unanimous, and that is Resolution 1968. Okay, finally, 2005-19, request for consideration to adopt resolution opposing current legislation in the Senate regarding installation of utility poles and wireless facilities in the city-owned right-of-way, requested by, Mr. Kendrick, we're going to give you credit on that.
Well, it's really the league of municipalities. I don't mind taking credit for it.
All right, Mr. Jones?
But I didn't draft it.
Then, then the request is by Mr. Jones, okay?
I have to say, yeah, I put this forward.
All I did was fill in the City of Homewood's name.
Okay. Um, all right, request by Mr. Jones. Chair would welcome a motion.
Maybe we'll start.
Motion for Mr. Jones, second for Mr. McCloskey. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to abstain.
Okay, so we have one abstention, but 10 yays, and that'll be Resolution 1969. All right, y'all, that concludes our agenda, and.
Can I just, first, on the bottom there?
Sure. Which is not me, but go ahead.
No, Mr. Kendrick.
Yeah, you didn't assign it. Mr. Kendrick?
I'm sorry.
I had, just a quick question. So the, when you have two extensions, uh, so.
To pass anything, you have to have a majority?
Majority of all present.
That's correct. If you had less than 11 people, then you had five votes.
Okay, I just wanted to.
In fact, if you have 11, the majority would be six. In fact, if two choose not to vote, it can't be a positive, it's certainly a positive vote.
That's what I, okay, I just wanted to clarify the.
It's a majority of those present.
Majority of them present. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Wright, so after you vote again, you must.
Well, if, even if we voted again, it would still be, it would still wouldn't have a majority, so, okay.
We need to suspend it, wait.
I think we're veering into dangerous territory here, so with that, Mr. Bischoff, do you have any comments for the mayor?
No, sir.
Okay. I don't blame you after that. Uh, Mr. Gualtney?
Uh, just.
Wait, I'm sorry, let me be extremely extraordinarily rude. We are holding our next meeting next Monday night, so therefore, committee meetings will be scheduled in the afternoon hours, um, and we'll just schedule whatever length of time we need, and we'll start when we start.
So, so we didn't start today?
Yeah. Everybody great.
I, that's why I said what I said. Now, Mr. Gualtney?
I, I just wanted to thank Melody and her, her crew for creating a float for us that none of us got to ride on. We love Homewood Day, and also.
It was a great one, too, I'm just like.
Yeah, just leave it in storage, we'll use it next year. Um, but also, kudos to Merkley's staff for not only a successful parks, we love Homewood Day, but a successful, they're sitting out the paving list, it's exciting to see continued improvements in the city and those kinds of things that are very visible to the citizen. So, that's it.
Right, thank you. So, again, before we go any further, Mr. Thames.
When do, when do we need to start?
How long do you need, Mr. Jones?
Oh, how long do I need?
Yeah, I have a question.
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, how long do you need?
But, but beginning when?
Five.
Five, we're going to start at five, okay?
Yes.
All right, 5:30, P and D, um, I guess we'll do 15, I won't be here, so I'll get somebody to chair, but it should go fairly quickly.
Are we gonna, wait a minute.
Nobody's going to be here?
Mr. Jones, you're not going to be here. Mr. Thames, you're not going to be here. Is there anyone else who is not going to be?
Brian Wallace is not going to be here.
Well, with all due respect to Mr. Wallace, he's not on the council.
As long as he and Peter and Mike are here, we should have a core, core alliance.
I'll be here, they're both on P and D, too. Yeah, I'll need, and I really would like for P and D to happen because we have GMC coming to present where we are on 18th Street, and we kind of need to sign off on that so they can get down to ALDOT for a sign off required by ALDOT.
You can interfere now with a meeting here.
Andrew?
We'd be here at 5:30?
I can be at 5:30.
Okay, thank you. All right, P and D at 5:30.
So, so will 15 minutes be long enough, given what you just said?
Well, why don't we set it for 15? Uh, if the council has questions, it can go over, but in the interest of time with council later that night, might as well keep it short, so we can move on if necessary.
What else, Mr. Thames?
Um, other than, I would just point out, and Walter's probably aware of this, other than the Greenway, I don't know if we have carried forward funding for any other project other than this traffic study. And we finally engaged, insulted to actually do it. I mean, it's been, I think it was in the budget when I got on council. So that's exciting.
It is.
Yep.
I think it, I think you get five stars for persistence.
Well, that goes to Mr. Gualtney. Um, I just, he wasn't here when it first got put on the budget, not only, I think I was, so anyways, I'm glad to, I'm glad to see it moving forward.
That's true.
Mr. Gualtney had barely graduated from high school. Uh, Mr. Higginbotham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think the only thing I have to mention is, um, that this coming Sunday, I think it's from 2:30 to 4:00, the Friends of the Homewood Public Library will be having their, I guess it's sort of semi-annual, not annual, um, $5 bag sale, which is you can go down to the Friends bookstore, and anything you can get in their paper bag, you can get for $5, and it is a fantastic bargain. You can load up with books and DVDs and CDs and magazines, whatever they have, just to your heart's content, and, uh, it's one of my favorite things about the library, so I had to at least mention it, and I would invite people to come out and take advantage of it because it is a wonderful deal. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Uh, I really don't have much tonight. Um, yeah, uh, I'm trying to remember. Mike and I are discussing our, our town hall that usually would take place in May, but we've got a lot of things going on. Um, so we're looking at possible dates, and we'll let people know as soon as we get a chance.
Good, thank you, sir. Um, Public Safety? Public Safety?
Well, so in the interest of time, and I'll have to, I'll have to look over to Mrs. Andrus, and I have to say, Ms. Smith, I was, as we were adding to the agenda today, I was like, okay, there's five items.
Yeah.
I wonder how many of those are going to be public safety, because there's nothing on the referral agenda, so I hate to say that you had one more and I had zero. So, the only two items that I've got are the Hollywood Boulevard, which of course we're waiting on Volkert to go up there.
They're supposed to get it this week, right?
They're supposed to get that this week, and then the lighting issue. So I don't, I don't know that-
Okay, that we are going to need, yeah.
I don't know that we even need to set it.
I got you, yeah, that's fine.
If you're, if you're okay with that-
That is fine. I will say I did find some notes that I'd made about possibly pursuing a grant for that lighting, and I'd forgotten to bring that up, so, but we can carry that and discuss it, yeah.
Yeah, if you're okay with those two items, then we'll just, we won't call Public Safety, and I'll give, I'll give my time to Mrs. Smith because she's going to need it, so.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
I apologize for not being here last week. The, the, the overall convention for the Alabama League was very, very positive, and I can, I'm going to distribute a few bits of information over the next week, just to share what, what happened at the convention, and it was really a very positive experience, so thank you for entrusting me to be your delegate, and met lots of people and got some new ideas on things. And then my middle child, Hill, is graduating next week, so, on Monday, so I apologize, and thank you for chairing in my absence, and that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Jones, never apologize for a child graduating from anything. Anything. I mean, if it's kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, it's, it's still a graduation, so. With that, Ms. Smith?
Well, I think because my referral agenda is quite large, I don't think I can fit it in 15 minutes, so sadly, committee, I'm going to have to set it for an earlier time, so I think I'm going to have to take-
Half at 4:45, half at 4:40.
Well, Peter has something, too. I think, because there are some items that aren't, that are not necessarily, need to be acted on next week because they're not going to be in public hearing until June 10th, which means we could talk about them in committee on June 3rd in advance of those public hearings. So I think I can probably do everything else in, from 4:30.
Okay, 4:30 it is to 5 o'clock.
Yes, and the soccer teams both went to state. The boys sadly lost in their semifinal game versus Fort Payne, which was heartbreaking, but very exciting that the girls won their first ever state championship in the history of the program, so that was super, super fun to see. They, they were so excited, and they've got some really, both teams have some really good young talent, and it's going to be fun to watch them over the next few years.
Great, and we can look, not only are we pleased with the results, but we can look forward to future success. Mr. Wyatt?
So I'll set public works for 5:45 for Peter, and congratulations to the soccer teams, and I'm assuming you're going to talk about track.
You can talk about track.
No, you've probably got more details than I-
Well, I just have the list of-
I see a list of stuff. You've got, you've got more details than I do, but congratulations to the track team for winning yet another, boys and girls for winning another state championship, which seems to be a regular event now. And then, lastly, just want to thank Berkeley and his team, and Harvard, and everybody else for the new athletic facilities in West Homewood and the pool at Patriot Park. We had, I think this is the first meeting since we've had those ribbon cuttings, and everything out there just looks amazing, and it came in on time and under budget, which is no small feat as well, so thank you to all of them for their hard work because it certainly has paid off.
Ms. Andrus?
Yes, congratulations to Homewood Boys and Girls Track Team for winning state championships. That's the sixth in a row for the girls for outdoor, second in a row for the boys. They swept cross-country, indoor and outdoor, both of them this year, so congratulations to the following athletes for making, for winning state. Will Stone, Makaiya Sills, Josh Thomas, Laney Phelps, Maggie White, Iya Finch, and the relay team of Logan Justice, Jack Ray, Crawford Hope, and Will Stone. Also, I missed Eric Swope a couple of meetings back. He won Metro South Coach of the Year, so I want to congratulate him for boys cross-country. I needed to announce that Daniel Chaplin, who's our, one of our residents on Lancaster Road, has been selected to be in Dancing with the Stars Magic City Edition, and so